This is NHTV Two, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Mike Fried in North Haven's first selectman, and welcome to our October Board of Selectmen meeting. Joined tonight, as always, by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Boehme. Thank you and welcome to our meeting. We'll start out by standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, any public comments to tonight's agenda?
Well, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda. This being a regular meeting, we can do that. I would like to make a motion to amend item three on the agenda. It currently reads "Approval of Minutes to the Board of Selectmen Meeting of August 5th, 2021." That was an inadvertent typo. It should read "Approval of the Minutes of the Board of Selectmen's Meeting of September 2nd, 2021." So I will make that motion to amend the agenda accordingly.
Is there a second?
I will second Sally's motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Sally. Item number four, I'm just going to spend a few minutes on a couple-
No, we have to do the approval of the minutes.
First, we have to approve them.
Yes, okay. The approval of those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Selectmen Meeting of September 2nd, 2021.
Okay, is there a second?
I will second that motion.
All right, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for that again, Sally.
No problem.
All right, a quick overview on a couple of topics I wanted to discuss. Number one, I was asked by one of our residents to explain or give an explanation as to some of the sources of town income from external sources, federal and state in particular. So, in our budget every year, you'll see some of these line items in terms of revenue projections come from the state of Connecticut or either the federal government. So, a quick explanation, ECS is defined by education cost sharing. In our budget this year, there's $3,851,360. That's what we get from the state budget, is much more than that every year, but that is what that is, education cost sharing. I have a couple of questions on PILOT. What does it mean? PILOT is an acronym for Payment in Lieu of Taxes. Each municipality across the state, all 169 cities and towns, for those of those 169 that have non-taxable property, colleges, hospitals in particular, we receive a percentage of what that would be, those taxes would be. Now, years ago, that was about 77 cents on a dollar, or 77 percent. It's now fallen. Last year was about 33 percent. However, there was a new tiered program on PILOT. So, our PILOT this year is $1,061,389. That's a payment from the state in lieu of taxes that the municipality, in this case, North Haven, would have received if we were able to tax those properties. We also get tax relief for veterans, that's $24,000. That's handled through our assessor's office in terms of the applications. The Pequot-Mohegan Grant, we get $86,789. That's an agreement between the state, the casinos. Each municipality gets some money. We get $86,789. And then there's what was once our favorite subject, Sally Mercer in Bill. Now it's called Grants for Municipal Projects. That is a grant for municipal projects primarily in public works, for public works expenditures, or in some cases, we've sent waivers in for public works vehicles. That's managed by OPM at the state level, our process to request those waivers. And that is $1,860,380. All of this is in our budget book, ladies and gentlemen. Now, this year, we, all of us, not only in Connecticut, but across the United States, have received federal stimulus called ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act. North Haven receives, will receive two, what's called, not one of our favorite words, but it's the word the federal government used, tranches. We have received $3,504,000. We will receive another $3,504,000 in June of 2022. We have budgeted for less than that. I think our budget number is $1,170,000. When we prepared the budget, we weren't sure of the county allocation, but that is what our American Rescue Plan Act dollars are. Then there's tax relief for the totally disabled. That's $3,378,000. And then there's another line item that we get from the state, telecommunications access line. That's revenue municipalities receive back from the state for 911 upgrades and our 911 systems. And that's a surcharge that everybody in the state of Connecticut, every person pays for their telephone. Could range from 16 to 66 cents on every bill. Every municipality receives that money. So I hope that answers the question from some of our residents. There was more than one resident, actually. On a noteworthy point, we once again, Saturday, October 23rd, we've done this ever since I've been in office, ladies and gentlemen. This is a very critical part of what we do to manage substance use disorder. And this is a prescription pill take-back. This is in conjunction with our relationship with the DEA. And we'll be holding this pill take-back on Saturday, October 23rd. It's at Fire Headquarters. It's a drive-thru where people can bring old prescription medications or ones they're not using anymore, any type of medication. To a drop-off point, Valerie here has been outstanding with her and some of our other associates in managing this every year. And that's from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And we encourage you to bring your expired or unused leftover medications. One final point about this, and this is why this administration has been so meticulous on trying to manage this issue. Because what we have discovered many, many years ago is that many young men and women who get hooked on drugs start from the medicine cabinets of their own home, taking some of these prescription meds. And that was a staggering statistic, about 53 percent of those who become afflicted with substance use disorder start in the medicine cabinets of their own homes. Now, we've taken probably millions and millions of tablets and prescription drug medications out of the medicine cabinets of North Haven through this program down through the years. And it's something we're firmly committed to, as all of us, not only in North Haven, not only in Connecticut, but all over the country, as chief elected officials and as governments, try to provide resources and help for those in need who have family members, friends who have been afflicted with what we refer to as a disease, substance use disorder. And lastly, I was at a press conference with Commissioner of Deep, Katie Dykes, whom I work very closely with. And we, along with Upjohn, sorry, Pfizer at the Upjohn site, along with Vida Nuova, their consultant whom we've worked with for years, we cut a ribbon, a symbolically powerful ribbon cutting, that has now opened up the former Upjohn site to an ecological wonderland with walking trails, paths. And we have developed with Pfizer an intricate booking system online where residents can make appointments and take these trail walks, nature walks, to see the environment, to see all of the wildlife that's there. And this is now at the site of what was a contaminated site for years. Also, Pfizer and I are working very closely to develop the 17 acres of, that was once the parking lot for Upjohn, for industrial, light industrial, or even potentially commercial development. And, we are also not only working with Pfizer, I introduced Pfizer to the Department of Transportation, and we will be bringing a train station to North Haven. That is a project I've been working on, ladies and gentlemen, for six years here. There's $6 million spent, that the state spent on a design phase. And that train station, once the funding for construction is appropriated, will go at the end of Styles Avenue, down past J. Ruse. And it'll be straddling the tracks into the Pfizer property. We've orchestrated an agreement between Pfizer and the Department of Transportation to bring that train station there. Now, that's the present. The history is very compelling. As many of you know, there was a Citizens Advisory Panel put together back in the late '70s. Wonderful people, North Haven residents, sat on this panel. And they were a citizens advisory group that was very concerned, and they wanted to highlight the contamination that was going on at the Upjohn facility back then. Now, as all that was happening, and we have honored the Citizens Advisory Panel, one woman, Annette Gotilia, I'll mention her name. She has since passed away. I remember honoring her at the library years ago. All of these wonderful citizens had a tremendous impact in changing the dynamics of this Upjohn site back in the late '70s. When I first moved to North Haven, I'd be jogging up and down Hartford Turnpike with my daily workouts, and I would smell the sweet smell of perfume. Because when the wind blew north, that is part of what the scent was. Upjohn was a consumer product company. In my corporate career, they were bought out by Pharmacia, and we represented Pharmacia as one of our clients. This was long after Upjohn had closed here. And there was, there's a woman, a North Haven resident, who I know very well and I've worked closely with down through the years, Nancy Alderman. And I wanted to share with you the rest of the story. So Nancy, at the time, was president of a health and environment group. And she worked with a gentleman, Fred Krupa, I think his name was. He was the executive director, and he's now the president of the group. Forty years ago, as our Citizens Advisory Panel, I know, Sally, you're a historian, and Bill, I know you like history too. Forty years ago, Nancy Alderman took a different path, and it was a very effective path. She knew that the only way to get a voice with Upjohn corporate at a shareholders' meeting was to try to purchase more and more shares to get 3% of the stock, her and some of the people she was involved with. Now, as someone who's spent a lot of time on mergers and acquisitions in my corporate career, dealing with shareholders, that is a strategic thing that many shareholders look at. How do I gain enough shares to have a voice at a public meeting, their public meeting? So Nancy worked very closely and hard, and they purchased over 123,000 shares, which got them 3% of the stock. And part of her brilliance back then was the United Presbyterian Church of America had many, many shares. And Nancy and her associates, Nancy primarily, bought the shares from the Presbyterian Church. Now, Upjohn at the time was a Presbyterian company. In other words, they had the Presbyterian faith. So when Nancy went to the shareholders' meeting, Nancy spoke about how could a consumer product company pollute the environment and then sell products to consumers? How, in her words, could the left hand be polluting the environment and then have the right hand try to convince Upjohn's consumers to purchase their products? Now, I'm paraphrasing here. And through those efforts of Nancy and her associate, or associates, running a parallel path with the Citizens Advisory Panel, that created the change, ladies and gentlemen. So forty years later, Mike Fried is there, cutting a ribbon with the Commissioner, Katie Dykes of Deep, and with the Pfizer executives, along with Vida Nuova. So, a thank you to our Citizens Advisory Panel. We thank you many times. And a thank you tonight to Nancy Alderman for her relentless efforts in trying to create change, and now we see this as an ecological wonderland here, with future development that I'm working on, on 17 acres to include a train station. And that is all I'd like to say about that.
I have just a couple of comments on your overview. First, just regarding the revenue sources, I just wanted to point out an important distinction about the municipal grant for municipal projects, formerly known as Mercer. You know, we call it a grant. It is, as you pointed out, a part of our revenue budget and has been for years. And I just want to distinguish, and please correct me if I say anything wrong, we do get other grants, like LOSEP, Local Capital Improvement, and STEEP grants. The Board of Ed gets their excess cost grant. There are other grants that are not, that we get from the state that are not in our revenue budget. So that's a very important distinction about the municipal projects grant, that it is in fact part of our revenue. And our first tranche that we got, the 3.5 million, in June of 2021, which again was in the 2021 fiscal year, we did not budget for because we didn't even know about ARPA. ARPA wasn't passed until March of 2021. So I just wanted to make that clear, that that 3.5 million that we received was not budgeted for. So, I just wanted to add those comments. And then again, about your comments about the Upjohn site, Pfizer, most folks still think of it as the Upjohn site. As soon, and I'm so pleased that you attended that ceremony and that there are so many. It's a beautiful spot with all those nature trails. But when you first started speaking, I immediately thought of Annette Gotilia, so I'm glad that you mentioned her. I knew her. And I'll tell you, when she first started out, she didn't get much cooperation from the town of North Haven in the beginning, but kept at it. So I appreciate you mentioning her. And Nancy Alderman, we know quite well here on the Board of Selectmen. She's been here before, first on the turf field issue. And I believe she also spoke with us about the fracking issue a couple of years ago.
Yeah, even early on, it was about fire pits and-
Everything, yes. She's, not only did she work on this, but she's been before us, before, on other environmental issues. So she is a, thank you for calling, commending her as a very active and devoted citizen. Very hardworking. So, thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Bill, do you?
Along the, yeah, I did not know that history offhand. And I don't, I've not met Nancy personally. And it's a wonderful thing that she did. Unfortunately, it's taken 40 years to get to this point, you know, so. Oh, I got my, I'm sorry, I had my mic off. I personally don't know Nancy, but this is a wonderful thing that, you know, as Sally and Mike described, that she's done for the town, even though it's taken 40 years. There was actually a nice, I get an email every day from the Daily Nutmeg, and it was a nice email this week on the Title Marsh Trail, you know, which I think a lot of North Haven residents have had a hand in. So, that whole area is just beautiful, and that's great that. I did see in the newspaper the availability of, the availability of being able to get a walking tour, you know, on the Brickyard Point Nature Preserve by doing it online. So, I'm glad you mentioned that to everybody. It was in the newspaper. And, but, you know, I'm looking forward to actually doing that because I've separately enjoyed, you know, many times, walking on the Title Marsh Trail that we have. The other thing, I think in the middle there, you know, and I'm glad you highlighted the situation regarding turning in to, on October 23rd to the headquarters here for the Fire Department, you know, any kind of, you know, painkilling opioid-type drugs, but any kind of excess drugs, prescription drugs, or even non-prescription drugs should be turned in as well. Because, you know, I mean, the last thing you want to do, again, for the, you know, since we've talked so much about the environment, is flush them down the toilet. Because then they get into the system. I know they may go over to the water treatment plant, but they're hard to remove. They affect wild, you know, any, any kind of medication could affect wildlife. And I know there's continuing concern about eating, you know, shellfish and fish that may have absorbed some of these chemicals that they've gotten indirectly from people dumping, you know, medication, both prescription and non-prescription into the, you know, into water that gets into the food chain. So please bring anything you've got, I think, that might be medication, you know, to, I think, Fire Headquarters. I think they'll take it all. We've done that on, my family's done that on a number of occasions. So I think it's a great thing that we do that.
All right, Sally, I'll turn it over to you on your discussion points here.
Yes, I requested this item on the agenda, and I appreciate it being included. I wanted to give everyone an update on the first poet laureate process here in North Haven. A few, back late spring, early summer, we decided to go forward with a, finding someone to serve as a poet laureate. Many municipalities have one. And I reported, I believe, in July to you all that the application process was through September 30th. So I asked this to go on the agenda tonight because we've extended it to October 31st. So there is still time. If you, or if you know someone who is good at poetry, can go to the website, northhavenlibrary.net/poetlaureate, and you can get all of the information and the application. So I encourage people to apply. You have to be 21 and a North Haven resident. It's not required that you're a professional writer. It's not required that you've been published as a poet, although if you have any published poetry, you could submit that with your application. So I just wanted everyone to know that we did extend the deadline. And we will be, I am on the committee. The Library Board appointed me. I'm very honored to serve on the North Haven Poet Laureate Selection Committee. And it will, once the person is selected, they will serve a two-year term. It's our intention that this person could compose and recite poems at special ceremonies and promote reading and writing in our schools. I think the exciting thing about being the first poet laureate for North Haven is you could pretty much make the position what you want it to be and set the bar for future poet laureates to come. So I think it's very exciting, and I'm just encouraging folks out there, trying to help get the word out. So I appreciate you giving me this forum that you have until October 31st to apply. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the update, Sally.
All right.
So I'm gonna just kind of have Bill and Sally rotate from this point forward on the agenda. So Sally, would you like to start with the next item?
Yeah. Well, we were sent, the item six is correspondence. And we were sent a long letter, email, by email, from Gary George, who, by the way, is the citizen who suggested the poet laureate program. So that was, again, four or five months ago. But he has written to us again. He wrote to us last month with some concerns. And he seemed concerned that we didn't read the email in its entirety. We paraphrased his concerns and then addressed them. This is a rather long email. It's gotta be more than 2,000 words. I read it, I did a trial read-through, and it took about nine minutes to read. I certainly support, and I've always promoted, people writing to us. You know, especially during the pandemic, when people might not feel comfortable coming here. But this may be a little too long to read. I'll leave it to the wisdom of the group. I'm willing to read it, but it's quite long.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I think maybe, again, I think we did our best to try to summarize and address the, you know, address the items that he brought up. I'm not adverse, you know, again, to try to take a similar approach where, you know, I think he's given us several items, and maybe, again, we could do something to, you know, to comment on that, I think, in fairness to, you know, his, you know, you know, I think there, he makes some, he has some very good questions, which other people may be, you know, may be still interested in, or may want further information. Plus, he also has a new item, which I'm not sure that we can easily address, but I'm not adverse to maybe further, you know, commenting on, you know, in general, the fact that he's, I think, you know, brought up some things that I think the public would be interested in, which I appreciate, you know, him doing as well as what you mentioned earlier about the town poet laureate is a good suggestion.
What I think, and again, I'll leave, we could discuss this. I think, based on the length of this email, again, I think it's important that we promote and encourage folks to write to us with suggestions and ideas. But maybe we need some sort of limit on the length. And a lot of this is back and forth about what we discussed last month. And it's really hard to have a discussion with a piece of paper. So, again, I'm willing to read the whole thing. I think we, it's quite long. But I really do encourage folks to write to us, but try to keep it to, you know, maybe 500 words or something like that. This is well over 2,000. And I, of course, Gary might be thinking, well, you're talking about whether you should read it. You could have read it. But, but, you know, we really have to, this is, a lot of this is restating issues that we've already discussed. If you'd like, I think it's important, his new item is he wants to know the percentage of town employees who are fully vaccinated. And of course, you all might recall that a couple of months ago, this board unanimously passed a resolution encouraging all of our citizens to get vaccinated and to wear masks. We still are in this pandemic. We can't force people to get vaccinated.
Yeah, so we're about 90%.
90%, okay. So that answers his new item. Do you want Bill to go through these, or?
Yeah, I mean, since we discussed a couple of these items, Mike, do you feel like, you know, there might be some new information that you could provide on any of the items?
Well, you know-
I mean, I think recycling, we've already kind of covered, but-
Yeah, he wants there to be one click on our website to recycling.
So Valerie answered that question.
Yeah, we had two. You go to the website, you hit sanitation, and you hit recycling.
It's a two-click process.
Yeah. And I haven't, he mentions that some people don't know. I mean, the recycling, those green buckets have been around for decades. I think people are pretty used to what goes in there. And the information is available on the website.
Plus, at a previous Board of Select meeting, I had mentioned that we're on an initiative to create these things that we're gonna send to homes in terms of delineating the items that go in these green buckets. So, I think we've covered it. I think we've covered the education part. Now, we've gotta get to the point, Bill and Sally, where we get on this project and then put this, this, this presentation together to send to all the households. We've got the mock-up. Jeremy was here a couple of months ago, our Quinnipiac graduate student. He designed it, and we've gotta get that out. So that should be going out. And that'll further educate the public in terms of, you know, the single-stream recycling and what goes in these green bins.
Well, I respect Mr. George's concern about recycling. As you know, in this current budget, our tipping fee went way up as a line item. It almost doubled, or pretty close to it. So, and obviously, the more we recycle, the less, it helps us. So I understand his- So I understand his, his emphasis, but, you know, if you have any questions about recycling, or what goes in the green buckets, go to the website, and, and go to sanitation, right, and click on recycling, and it's all there. You could also go to the Public Works office, they have paper lists of what's available as, as well.
And you can always call if you, if you didn't have internet.
And we feel, as I've said many times, we feel it over, now it's up to 150-plus calls a day, so we're constantly answering questions for residents.
Right.
We're in a, we're in a public comment mode, as I've said before, every day here, and I'm so actively involved with social media, communicating with people up until sometimes 2:00 in the morning. So we are providers of information, and when people ask us questions, we provide information. But the information's the information, and that's the information, so.
Once again, I'm, I'm willing to read this, I can read rather quickly, but if that is not your, your wish.
Well, correspondence, we're, we're, not every government has correspondence, we do. Correspondence for decades, and it's even, even the town attorneys have told us this, summarizations are what we have always done. I like summarizations, executive, executive summaries.
Okay.
That's what I like, okay?
Well.
So I think with everything else on this agenda tonight.
Yep.
An executive summary is what I'm looking for.
Okay, well, his first item is a rehash of, of a moment of silence for all those who died of COVID, and we dealt with that last time, we had a ceremony on the Green where we dedicated a tree and a plaque. I, I hope other towns will follow our lead and do something similar, and.
We, we've done more than most towns with that present, you were with me that night, and so has Bill.
Yes, I was there, and it was a lovely ceremony, and, so, that was, he mentions a moment of silence, we, we have already honored those that we lost from COVID, and their thoughts, our thoughts are always with the families who have suffered loss as a result of this pandemic. The recycling issue, he brings up again, he wants, says, one click is better than two, but we've addressed that. Again, he's concerned about what the town of North Haven is doing for Afghan refugees, and once again, I would refer people to the ISIS website, all you'd have to do, I'm sorry, I said ISIS, IRIS.
IRIS, right.
You made me do that. The IRIS website, I-R-I-S website, IRIS is a wonderful organization that does great things for immigrants and refugees, and helping them get resettled. So if you go to the IRIS website, you can get plenty of information on how you could help.
One update on this, though, Sally.
Yes, sure.
Okay, so what is the town of North Haven doing? Through my affiliations as chairman of the Regional Council of Governments, and through my past presidency and executive board membership at CCM, all of us are collaborating, trying to support IRIS in their efforts. IRIS is in the process of fundraising, they're in a process of asking which homes and who has space in their homes to bring these refugees in. That is what they do. So if there's anybody that is, is very concerned about this, and you'd like us to connect you with IRIS, we will do so. And that's what we're doing. The municipalities are supporting the initiatives for IRIS, whose total focus right now is taking these 380 Afghan refugees that are coming into Connecticut and trying to find placements for them, so that's, that's another update.
Okay, and then the new item.
I think as Mr. George, you know, I think advocated, I, you know, you know, and he did mention that, you know, that we all think, you know, myself included, that IRIS is a great organization. You know, I think he was, you know, thought maybe a good idea was to post links on the town's website. Now, however, there's, you know, I mean, I, I think the problem with, with that is, number one, they're, you know, I think it's not the town's position to advocate, even though we've kind of advocated, you know, personally, that, you know, we have faith in IRIS, and think it's a great organization. I know other church groups are trying to do something similar. You know, and I think, you know, the, as opposed to, I think, I think they're looking for, instead of me personally, maybe sponsoring an Afghan refugee family, I think they think it's much better that a group do that because of the resources in terms of a, a community, you know, church group, or a not-for-profit that's been put together, so that there, there would be more than, you know, there would be the resources for all these things that these people need, that each of us individually would not have. So one of the problems, I think, maybe, in terms of using our website, from the town's standpoint, to do this, is, is that there's so many other worthy causes that, you know, that are out there, and, you know, are we gonna, you know, I mean, is it really the place to use our website to do that versus, like you've already done, referring people to that website? You know, so I mean, you could, I mean, like, I think about, you know, you know, all the wonderful things people do for cancer, cancer, child abuse, or domestic abuse, and, and I mean, I don't know whether we want to put all those things on our website, because there's really a long, you know, veteran, you know, I'm, obviously, as a veteran involved with veterans organizations, I mean, you know, we, we could go on and on in terms of, so we do one, what's stopping us from doing, doing every one that somebody proposes on our website?
Well, that's kind of what we're up against sometimes, Bill, you're right.
You know, and I, I, you know, I'm not sure that that's, you know, I mean, you know, what, what we should be doing, or at least in terms of, you know, the municipal website, even though it'd be great if we could do that, but there could be hundreds of links that we'd want to put up for hundreds of causes that I think are all worthy.
Right, I, I know that IRIS works very closely with a lot of local church organizations, and IRIS stands for Integrated Refugee and Immigrant Services. So again, if you're interested in helping with this worthy cause, you can just go to the IRIS website, and you'll find plenty of opportunities to help. And I think that covers the issues.
All right, item number seven, this is a very complicated subject, and I like to start by trying to explain this, and I'm gonna turn, again, like I said, the rest of this meeting over to Bill and Sally. So there is a state mandate, a law, that every single municipality has to abide by, and that is developing an affordable housing plan by June of 2022. North Haven, right now, is about 5.97% affordable housing stock versus the overall housing inventory, state mandate is 10%. Some municipalities are at 10, some are over 10, and many are under 10%. So as part of this mandate, Jennifer Capola, our attorney, addressed this at the last meeting, one of the statutory mandates in conjunction with this was that the town has to identify and form a housing committee, whose roles and responsibilities would be to hold public meetings, of which everybody watching this, and every resident of North Haven, should and could attend, to hear your views on how you feel about this subject. Now, affordable housing could take on many forms, it could be elderly housing, it could be workforce, young, professional housing, for those students coming out of college that have college debt and can't afford to buy a home. It could be affordable housing based on AG, adjusted gross income, commonly referred to as AGI, that the rents would be either at 40, 60, or 80% of the person's income, indexed by the state, where the landlords would be reimbursed, reimbursed by the state for the difference between what the affordable rent would be and what the market rate would have been. So Richard Lopresti, who is the chairman of our North Haven Housing Authority, who has, had, I should say, over 28 years of experience in housing at the state level, because we're under a time-pressure timeframe on this, Richard did an outstanding job at trying to put together a committee for us to look at as the Board of Selectmen. And the only guidance that I gave Richard was to make it a diversified committee, from a political party standpoint, from a knowledge standpoint, people from different walks of life and professions, and I think Richard did an outstanding job in coming up with this recommendation. Now, once this committee is memorialized and formed, then there's a series of monthly meetings that are going to take place, that I encourage every citizen who's interested in this concept, who's interested and has views either way, pro, pro-affordable housing, against affordable housing, these are gonna be the platforms to share your views, to share your opinions. The committee will be taking notes, digesting all the information, and then coming back to the town with an affordable housing draft plan. Now, we, in our Council of Governments, in the 16 cities and towns that I'm chairman of this year, we are also using the Council of Governments, at their cost, in their own budget, to hire a consultant to help develop a regional affordable housing plan, that will have 16 different chapters in it. Each chapter will represent a plan that's put together by each municipality. So I think it's very important that I review something with you tonight. And our town attorney, Jennifer Capola, who was here last week, I'm gonna review this, and I'm not the type of guy, as you know, to usually go by a script. I don't need scripts, I don't use scripts. However, this is a very important document she sent to us, and I want to capture it, the essence of it. And this is our town attorney. And the town attorneys all over the state are meeting with their councils, and their mayors, and their boards of selectmen on this very issue. As we discussed at last month's meeting, there is a statute in effect that requires all municipalities, bold, all, underlined, to prepare, adopt, and submit an affordable housing plan by June 1st, 2022. I actually thought it was June 30th, she says it's June 1st. And then to be updated every five years afterwards. The Connecticut Department of Housing has advised the establishment of a local affordable housing committee, and they say, quote, "It's essential to developing a meaningful affordable housing plan." DOH describes anticipated members of the committee as strong and vocal leaders who believe in the effort and are willing to be able to put in the time, because it's gonna be taking a lot of time, the time necessary to recruit, support, communicate, and carry out inclusive planning processes. In keeping with this guidance from the DOH, leaders in our community were contacted, again, this ties into Rich Lopresti, based on their volunteer and professional work in various areas, and those areas include education, health, business, senior and youth services, zoning, real estate, workforce training. They were asked if they'd be willing to serve on this committee, to assist the town in developing this plan. And she's saying this, and this is, now, these are my words, "We, Sally, myself, and Bill, are grateful that residents have agreed to serve, based on Richard's efforts to recruit people from all those different professions and walks of life." Now, Jennifer, our town attorney, wants to make two additional points. And one is the Council of Governments, which I just summarized, as the chairman of the Council of Governments, about the consultant. And there is now something that's critically important here in this process. It's a survey that has gone out. The survey information can be found on the homepage of the town website, it can be found on the town Facebook page, and flyers are being posted throughout the town. The survey is an additional component for the public to offer their thoughts, in addition to coming to those public meetings. Those public meetings, by the way, will probably be held at Direct Center. The survey is to get your views, how you want to see this go, what you'd like to see, what you don't like, and what you do like. So I'd encourage everybody to look for that survey. There are also paper copies of the survey available at Town Hall, the library, and the Community Services Department, and they can be returned and completed, and we will have the Council of Governments pick that up, because the Council of Governments is helping formulate the results of the survey. Survey provides each and every one of you with an important opportunity, once again, to share your opinions. And then, finally, Jennifer goes on to say, "The completion of the survey provides all residents with your first opportunity to participate in what, ladies and gentlemen, is a mandatory process for every city and town across the state." All meetings, like we said, will be public meetings. Thank you. So with all of that being said, now, I really would like to turn it over to you and Bill Sally, okay?
Well, Bill, why don't you take item seven, and I'll do eight?
Well, I'm sorry, Sally, I didn't hear you, you want me to do seven?
Item seven, sure.
I'd be glad to, thank you. Item number seven, the agenda is to consider and act upon a resolution to establish and appoint an ad hoc advisory committee, to be known as the Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee, for the purpose of developing an affordable housing plan for the town of North Haven, in compliance with Connecticut General Statute's Section 8-30J, which plan will be presented for review and approval by the Board of Selectmen, and to authorize the first selectman, Michael J. Frida, to appoint additional members to the committee as necessary and appropriate in his discretion.
Now, these, this committee will be meeting, you said, monthly, will they be keeping us, the Board of Selectmen informed in how they're doing, or will we just get a final recommendation?
Further along in the resolution, it does state that they'll be providing updates to the board.
Oh, that's right, because I knew I read it somewhere, so I must. So they will be doing that.
On the next page, I think.
They'll be coming to see us.
Yeah, one of the items, I'm sorry.
Okay.
So I'll turn eight over to you, Sally.
All right, so I'll do the resolution, and maybe I'll answer my own question. Number eight, resolve that, one, the Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee is hereby established for the purpose of developing an affordable housing plan for the town of North Haven, in compliance with Connecticut General Statute's Section 8-30J, which plan will be presented for review and approval by the Board of Selectmen. Two, the housing, the Affordable Housing Plan Advisory Committee shall consist of the following individuals, Goldie Adele, 520 Washington Avenue, Ray Anderson, 14 Colonial Drive, Lynn Frederickson, 95 Pool Road, Alden Mead, 200 Remmon Road, Stephen Miller, 34 Sackapoint Road, David Montz, 23 Windsor Road, Christine Reardon, 92 Frost Drive, William Richards, 18A North Avenue, Roderick Williams, 120 Lancelot Drive, Marvin Wilson, 27 Sentinel Hill Road, and Bethany Zemba, 99 Sugar Hill Road. Three, the first selectman, Michael J. Frida, is hereby authorized to appoint additional members to the committee as necessary and appropriate in his discretion. Four, the committee shall meet as required to fulfill its purposes. Five, the first selectman will attend the first meeting of the committee to oversee the election of a chairman, vice chairman, and secretary of the committee. Six, town employees will attend the meetings of the committee as available to offer their input and support of the work of the committee based upon their specialized knowledge, but will not be voting members of the committee. Seven, the committee shall issue, here we go, the committee shall issue monthly status reports to the Board of Selectmen, beginning with the board's November 4th, 2021 meeting, or at such later date in November, to which said meeting may be rescheduled. And eight, the recommended affordable housing plan shall be presented to the Board of Selectmen to enable adoption of the plan by the board before the statutory deadline of June 1st, 2022. So I will move that resolution as read.
Is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. In the discussion, I'd like to thank Richard Lopresti for all his work to create the committee, and I'd like to thank each and every one of the people whom Sally just read for participating. It's gonna be a long process, ladies and gentlemen, and a lot of work, thank you for serving your town. With that being said, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item nine.
Mike, when do they, excuse me, when do they anticipate that they, if they're gonna report to us within basically a month now? Have they already tentatively scheduled their first meeting?
No, I don't think so, have they? They have?
Well, Jennifer's gonna be speaking with them after tonight, and there is something that we already have reserved, a room ready, and we're gonna get going.
To get that organizational meetings.
Yep, it, well, the organizational. Yep, well, the organizational meeting will actually be next week, and then there, another meeting after that has already been planned later in October.
Because it's a pretty quick deadline for their first report to.
Right, so right off the bat, we have two meetings scheduled in October.
Okay, item nine. Who would that, would I take that?
Number nine is to consider and act upon an authorization resolution, I'm sorry, to act upon an authorizing resolution to obtain grant aid under the state DEP Clean Water Fund financing for water pollution abatement facilities.
All right, so before we read the resolution, I'll just explain what this is about, very technical, I'll put it into layman's terms. The Water Pollution Control Authority, back in 2019, and really, we're experiencing this quite often with these storms, the inflow has exceeded its permitted intake by D. Anytime the inflow of water through storms, hurricanes, tornadoes exceeds the permitted maximum, then we have to do work, what's called INI. INI is an internal system that basically determines where the inflows are coming and how we either redirect the inflows that shouldn't be inflowing. And in order to keep the permit active, we have to do a study, which we've done. The study was roughly $255,000 required by state permitting laws. This grant, we think we can get, we would reimburse ourselves for about 55% of that cost, and that's what this is about, Sally, before you read the resolution.
Okay, well, that's helpful, yeah. Water's been a problem for homeowners this past year, and we all deal with water in the basement, it's also a problem for the town, and that's what this is all about. So any money that we can possibly get to help defray the costs would be great. So with that said, I'll read the resolution. Number 10. Item 10, resolved that it is in the best interests of the town of North Haven to enter into contracts with the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection. In furtherance of this resolution, Mr. Michael J. Frida, the first selectman, is duly authorized to enter into and sign contracts on behalf of the town of North Haven, Connecticut. The first selectman is further authorized to provide such additional information and execute such other documents as may be required by the state or federal government in connection with said contracts, and to execute any amendments, recisions, and revision thereto.
Okay.
Where does it say you're going to apply for a grant? I thought that's what you said this was about.
Item nine, see?
Yeah, well, that's to consider and act upon, that's just telling us what to talk about.
So.
But, okay.
Or you're saying in the resolution.
In the resolution, number nine is just a.
They're referring to it as sign said contracts and such documents and all of it.
Okay.
So I believe that is all encompassed.
The contracts for the grants.
Correct.
Okay, all right.
You're authorizing the, you and Bill, to sign for to apply for.
Okay, I just expected to see a little reference in the resolution, because number nine is just an agenda item for discussion. But that is what this is about, to obtain a grant. Okay.
Yeah, that's just the way that they provide, it was their work, you know, we go on their wording.
So this is their, one of those, okay.
They don't always make sense.
I understand, I understand.
And I think you could kind of execute such other documents, I think, intentionally vague as well, that I could say that would include completing a grant.
There might be other grants, and I think that's where that went.
Okay. Well, with that understanding and that explanation that the first selectman provided us about some water influx problems, I will move the resolution as I just read in item 10.
All right, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, so a motion, second, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next.
Item 11 on the agenda is consideration and possible action on the proposed sale by the town of real property on Mountain Brook Road, consisting of approximately 7,987 square feet, 0.1 acre, to Frank J. Polano for the sum of $7,000.
Sally, would you like to read the resolution?
Well, can we talk about this first? Because the resolution is to go forward with it, and I have some questions about it. I mean, number 11 says to consider, so can we consider it? Do you want to give your own intro to it, and then I could ask my questions?
Yeah, certainly. So this actually went through, was voted on at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and this was a situation where we have a homeowner, Mr. Polano, who has a piece of property in the back of his land that might have been decades ago potentially considered a roadway from Honeycomb out to Mount Carmel. So it's been inactive.
Mountain Brook.
No, Mount Carmel Avenue, Mount Carmel Avenue.
But I thought it was Mountain Brook to Mount Carmel Avenue.
What did I say?
You said Honeycomb.
So it would be Mountain Brook, right. They're both almost adjacent to each other, so I apologize. So Frank approached the town and was interested in buying it to seal it off from potentially any future development, which may or may not have happened. So we worked through the processes, which include, by charter, we have to do a blue book appraisal, and the appraisal came back, I think a copy of the appraisals in the packet, showing that the value of the property, $7,000. So that is the bid, that's the bid. So by rules and regulations, we have to offer it to the abutting property owners, neither of whom wanted it. So Frank essentially bid the $7,000. It went through planning and zoning, there was discussion there also, and was voted on, and it has to come back to us to authorize the sale. That's the synopsis.
Okay. Well, I watched the September 13th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for their position on this. They, they don't really approve it. What they do is what's called an 8-24 referral. That means, there's a Connecticut General Statute 8-24, which says that whenever a municipality is going to sell property, the proposal must be referred to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a report, where, according to Alan Frederickson, the land use administrator, the purpose of this, the referral to P&amp;Z is to ensure that the sale is consistent with, with planning and zoning regulations. So they didn't really, they approved the report by a 3-2 vote. What concerned me watching that meeting, and if anyone wants to watch it, the discussion begins at minute 5:30 of the Planning and Zoning meeting. What concerned me was a comment from the town engineer, and you alluded to it, Michael, because he said the following when asked why we're selling it. And his quote is, quote, "From what I understand, I guess it is to try to prevent any future development that might happen through that right of way." And that perplexed me a little bit, because if you're trying to prevent future development, the last thing you want to do is sell it. The best way to prevent future development is for the town to keep it. And in fact, in recent years, the town purchased several open space properties totaling about $1 million, when you look at all of them, plus the conservation easement. And we, the rationale that we gave to the citizens in the purchases of those properties was to prevent future development. So to say we're selling this to a private individual, and again, I'll read that, "I guess it is to try to prevent any future development," that's the last thing you want to do, is to take it out of our hands, you lose all control over it. I think everybody should realize, this is a very, I went to the site today, and it's very rough land, it's wooded, it, there's about a 50-foot arc section of the Mountain Brook cul-de-sac by about 135 feet going toward the proposed buyer's property. And he has property on, as you said, Mount Carmel, 777 Mount Carmel, it's about 11.2 acres. So it, and this is in the area of town, very close to the Hampden Line, very, very Quinnipiac University-ish. They have purchased other properties in that area of North Haven. So it, it, I kind of agreed with one of the Planning and Zoning members who said, you know, why are we doing this? You know, this was preserved as a right of way, just as a potential connection, I think, as you said, but it's been there for decades, it's never been used. I would like to hear from the seller, why he wants to buy it.
Well, why don't we look at it this way?
Okay.
We'll use you and I as an example. Let's say you and I and Bill, okay?
All right.
We own a house.
Okay.
And let's say we're a family. And in that house, in the backyard, there is a portion of our, of land that splits our property that was once designed to potentially be a roadway from Mountain Brook to Mount Carmel. And in the back of our minds, we're wondering, I don't, we don't own that land, so what would stop any developer from, let's say, building a house up on Mountain Brook, or creating some sort of movement to connect those two roads to Mount Carmel? We, as a family, we'd be sort of looking over our shoulders, saying, you know, that's sort of, I can't control that, I don't want that, I don't want to have a road come through and maybe split my property with my neighbor. So the buyer, we're the seller, okay, the buyer is trying to create some peace of mind, saying that I don't want any roadway development, trails, easements coming through my property, whatever the intention was back in the late 70s. So we've got to put ourselves in the position of the potential seller.
That's us.
That's us, okay? So as a seller, we have to recognize that the homeowner has a concern that's out of his control. We're not going to certainly develop it, but someone, someone potentially could have preempted the buyer and said, I want to buy that, I live up on top here, I want to put a road out to Mount Carmel. So I can understand the homeowner wanting to do everything in accordance with the rules and regulations of the government, but I can understand the homeowner's apprehension about having a piece of land that goes through his property that he can't control.
This right, this right of way does not go through his land. I got the, I went to the engineering office, and I got this map, it's, it, the right of way ends at his property line. For it to continue to Mount Carmel, it would have to go smack through his 11-acre parcel. That's never going to happen.
But somebody is concerned, or somebody could potentially do something up near his property there, and then, you know.
He owns the property.
But, but that right of way there.
It's, it's over here, on the other side of his property line.
Right over there, so.
Right, so his, his, if he buys this, he's going to have this little 50 by 138 kind of rectangular piece connecting his property to Mountain Brook Road. Right?
In his mind, he's sealing off any possible future development of that, that piece right there. So, you know, I personally don't have an issue with it, because we did it in accordance with the rules and regulations of the government. There's no downside for us, other than to get $7,000 on this. We're not going to use that.
Well, I, I'm not concerned about the process this time. Lots of times I have a concern about process. It's just, the concern is, why do it if you're trying to prevent future development that says we should hold on to it? Then it can't be developed, because we own it, we own it now. But do you understand my point about my open space analogy? That, that was the reason we gave to buy property, so that the town would own it to prevent development. Now you're saying we're selling to prevent development? And Andy, the town engineer, said, it's so steep, it can't be developed anyway. And I mean, it's just, it's less than a fifth of an acre, so that's our 40 land up there. So who, no one, no one's going to put a house on this, it can't be developed. It's just, to me, it looks like he's trying to connect to Mountain Brook.
See, Sally, I agree with your argument, which is why we should sell it, because there's only three likely buyers for that piece of property, the two people that, on the other side of that strip of land, and him. And, you know, if, to go back to your open space point, if it was, you know, I mean, it's point, it's like seven, what, 7,800 square feet?
Yeah, it's a little less than a fifth.
I'm sorry, almost 8,000 square feet.
Yeah, it's about a fifth of an acre.
Yeah, it's like, it's, it's, it's just, you know, why keep it on, why, you know, who will ever want to buy it? If it's not him and the two people there, you know, it'll never be sold to anybody. It's not real open space where, you know, if it was 10 acres as opposed to 0.1 acres, I think it's in the best interest of the town to sell it, because it's still $7,000, and there's never going, and that was fair value based on current pricing. And the only three people, you know, three owners who would ever want it are the three contiguous property owners, including Mr. Polano. So it just seems like it's in our best interest to take the $7,000, because we may never have another offer.
Look, I'm not.
Let me ask you this, who initiated this? Did you contact these three?
They contacted.
Who contact, who initiated this deal?
Mr. Polano, came from this town.
Okay, so, because you may, you know, we weren't actively saying, oh, we got to get rid of this.
We didn't even know we had it.
Right, that's what I figured.
We did all the investigation on, the research on it.
Right.
And then when I mentioned the other two people, by town charter, by rules, we have to offer it as to abutting property.
Yeah, this guy and this guy, I see that, I see that. So, but the whole plan was initiated by the, the buyer who owns an 11-acre.
Yes.
Piece of property between this right of way and Mount Carmel Avenue. It is on Mount Carmel Avenue.
It surprised us that there was even an issue. None of us even knew about it. We had researched the maps.
Mm-hmm.
That's how it started.
I, I personally don't know Mr. Polano, but I'm very happy that he wants to give us $7,000 for something that basically, you know, I'm not sure anybody would want, other than him or the two adjacent property owners, and they've already declined.
Right, to me, that's a non, a non-issue. We, we own little pieces of land all over the place in town.
Yeah, but again, I think, you know, what's in the best interest of the town, and I think $7,000 is something that we may never have another, another person, another buyer ever want, because it seems extremely unlikely, based on the way you've described it, and the way, you know, and the way the property map looks, which I've looked at as well. It seems like, why not, you know, get rid of a, basically, a piece of land that has no use to the town, it's not really usable, not even, you know, big enough for any kind of open space, and it's, as you said, based on the slope and everything, it really, it really, you know, will probably sit like that forever, and we'll get $7,000 as the seller. So I think it's in the best interest of the town.
Right, and that's what, that's what the town engineer was saying, he said, because it's so steep, he's not sure anything could be done with it anyway, which begs the question, why is this guy even worried about it, which begs another question, what's, what's really going on here? I, I, okay, I, that's, I just, what, what, what concerned me was that statement by the town engineer that this was being done to prevent development. I mean, lots of people say, oh, good, we're preventing development, we're preserving our, our small-town charm, but this is the opposite of what you do. You don't sell it, you keep it. Okay.
I think the town engineer was repeating what the property owner was, was saying.
Okay.
Not necessarily, that statement wasn't necessarily the town's opinion, he's, he's, he's giving the explanation as to why the property owner asked to see if this could be purchased.
Okay.
So, and again, you know, once Mr. Polano approached the town, we turned it over to Lynn Sedasky, who spent, I'd, I'd say, two months on this doing the research.
Mm-hmm. Great, okay.
But look, you know, we were going to call for the vote, I mean, look, we respect your opinion, we're trying to give you the explanation.
Yeah, I, I understand. So if, if what, if that statement that I read is not the town's position to prevent future development, but perhaps the buyer's, then you're saying the town's position is, we can't do anything with it, so let's just get the seven thousand dollars?
So Andy Bevelock was not offering the town's position. He's, he's reflecting what the property owner, the, the, why the property owner wanted to buy it.
And what is the town's position?
The town's position is, we didn't even know we had it.
Okay.
But we discovered we had it. So for us, if they're willing, whoever it was, Mr. Palano or the Butters, if they're willing to pay the market value that has no use for the town, we're taking the seven thousand dollars.
That's what I was saying was my position.
Right, well, okay, seven.
If we can't ever use it, nobody else can, you know. We're very glad that he wants to give us seven thousand dollars.
But I see what you're saying though. I see what you, you were zeroing in on Andy's statement, which is not the town's position.
Right.
It's the buyer's position.
Yeah. So you're focusing on, we didn't, we didn't know we had it, we're getting seven. If it was seven hundred thousand, maybe I would feel differently. But, you know, we have a hundred and ten million-dollar budget, seven thousand.
And then it'd be like eighteen acres maybe instead of twenty acres.
Yeah, it just, uh, you know, I watched the meeting, the planning and zoning meeting, and, and the questions that were asked seemed meritorious to me. And so, you know, I did my research too and, and went to the property today. And it is very steep at the beginning, right, right from the street level of Mountain Brook. It does go down quite sharply, but then it looks like it levels off a little. It's, it's hard to tell though, because it's very rough, woodsy land. So, you know, I'm not just, you know, I, I do my diligence as well. So, okay, so let me go, go back to the agenda.
And the other thing that I think I, you know, that, you know, that Mike said earlier that again made me feel better was that the property owners on either side of the, the s- the strip of land, you know, did not really seem to have any reser, you know, did not want it to have any reservations if it, you know, if it no longer belonged to the town. So it wasn't like either of them objected either. So, you know, it sounds like it's, it's not harming, you know, the neighbors. For whatever reason, you know, he, he would like to, to own it. It seems like it's in the town's best interest to, to get the seven thousand dollars for something that's basically unusable by the time.
Right, right. So they, right, the, this, this strip of land in question is like a fifty-foot-wide division between the two property owners. I know you're saying neither of them wanted to buy it, but they don't object to another private landowner owning it, rather than the town. If you had a piece of land next to you, would you rather have somebody else own it or the town own it?
So I want to give you some, before we conclude, I want to give you some inside baseball on this.
Okay, I was hoping we'd go there.
So, Bill, the inside baseball on this is that after the planning and zoning meeting on the eight-dash-twenty-four, I said to staff members across the street, gentlemen, we have to get better at giving explanations. And there should have been a clearer explanation to the Planning and Zoning Commission as to what this was about. And they agreed.
Yeah, because the, one member of the Planning and Zoning Commission consistently kept asking a question that was not answered.
So what we, what I try to do with these meetings is give thorough explanations, like we did on some of these other issues here. Ambiguous explanations sometimes lead to issues, problems, speculation. Clear, concise commentary, that's what I'm trying to stress with, you know, some of our, our own people, so. Okay, Sally, go ahead.
Well, I'll, I'll read the resolution, but I'm not moving it. Resolved, I'll read it into the record, item twelve. Resolved that pursuant to section four oh six C of the town charter, the proposed sale to Frank J. Palano of real property owned by the town on Mountain Brook Road, as more particularly described on the map titled subdivision plan Blue Ridge Estates, North Haven, Connecticut, dated November eighteenth, nineteen seventy-seven, revised February ninth, nineteen seventy-eight, is approved for the sum of seven thousand dollars and subject to execution of a purchase and sale agreement in the form submitted to the Board of Selectmen. The first selectman is authorized to execute and purch, the purchase and sale agreement and such other necessary documents to effectuate the sale of the subject property.
All right, is there a motion?
I'll second that motion.
No, there's no motion. We need a motion.
I just read it into the record.
She didn't move it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to move that one. I'm sorry.
All right.
I don't hear, I don't hear so good sometimes.
All right, so we have a motion. I'm going to second the motion. Is there any other discussion? All right, so hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay, okay, thanks. Let's vouch for the record.
I got it.
Okay.
Number thirteen, we have bond releases. I'll do the first one, Bill?
Yes, please.
It is a number P oh one dash oh nine, four-four-one dash four-four-seven Washington Avenue. The amount of the original bond is twenty-five thousand dollars. The current balance of the bond, twenty-five thousand dollars. And we are, I will make a motion to release in its entirety with the recommendation of the town engineer and the Planning and Zoning Commission. I reviewed the documentation provided in our packet for this particular bond release and so I will make a motion for its release accordingly.
Is there a second?
No, thank you, Sally. I'll second your motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you.
Next one is, I was just looking at that, is actually number P twenty dash nineteen fifteen Cotton Tail Lane, Black Rock Homes. The amount of the original bond is two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, five-hundred dollars. The current balance of the bond is two-hundred-and-sixty thousand, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-six thousand, five-hundred dollars is the original bond. The current balance of the bond is two-hundred-and-six thousand, five-hundred dollars. The, the bond, the, we're going to reduce the bond in the amount of a hundred-and-fifty-six thousand, five-hundred dollars, retaining fifty thousand dollars with the recommendation of the town engineer and the Planning and Zoning Commission. And again, looking at the bond release form, I think there, there's still a number of items outstanding, which is why the bond is being retained at fifty thousand dollars. So I'll move, I'll move, I'll make a motion to do that bond reduction and retain fifty thousand of the existing bond.
Excuse me, Bill. Yes, I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Item fourteen is our property tax refunds. We have quite a long list tonight. I will make a motion to approve the property tax refunds listed in our agenda.
I didn't see anything unusual there. I will second Sally's motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor? Aye. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're at item number fifteen. And the next regular meeting of this Board of Selectmen will be Thursday, November fourth, at seven PM here at Memorial Town Hall. Now we're at the point of public comment. Mr. Katz.
Chairman Katz, Sherwood Drive. I've made some meetings this year. Most of the meetings are virtual. I have a problem with those. So many friends of mine have problems with the virtual Zoom. I can respect people that want to say something at the meeting. I respect them more if they come to the microphone versus sending an email. I can sit at a computer and say anything I want, not, not be uncomfortable. But if you have something to say, come here and say it in public. And that takes care of the nine-page email that you have. I want to ask Mike a question. Quinnipiac, do they contribute anything to our funds this year?
No.
Okay.
No.
Reason?
There is no reason. There was never, there was never a mandate every year.
Right.
But I, I, I know some of the reasons why. I'd rather not share them here because it has to do with Quinnipiac and their own operations and their enrollment, Sherman. That's really kind of why.
Okay, so we, part of why is we got nothing to share.
That's right.
I just want to say something short about Upjohn. I, I was in junior achievement in school over sixty years ago. And we were, we were represented with the former, the, the company prior to Upjohn. I don't remember exactly what it was, but they were as bad or worse than Upjohn. They had some worst chemicals in history stored on their property. One of them was fagene, which is a gas that was used in the First World War. So I'm glad to see this has changed. After having to paint my house several times because the paint peeled off my house and changed the liner of my pool several ti- several times because their chemicals rotted it, the DEP didn't want to hear anything about it. They used to fly over the plant at noon time and say, there's nothing being discharged. They refused to try it at night, midnight, when you could see it come out. Matter of fact, we had an incident where the connector, cars going over the connector, were covered with some, some kind of chemical that came out of there. And I don't know how many dozens of cars, paint peeled off the cars.
Sherman, can I ask you a, a question on that? So now, what I mentioned earlier, I, my first house, when I moved in, was Hartford Turnpike. And that'd be, you know, two miles away, let's say. But you were right there though. You've been on Sherwood Drive, right in the, you, you, I mean, I could have.
Over fifty years.
I could have thrown a baseball from your house to Upjohn. How did you deal with it in the summertime, as an example?
Uh, we, there wasn't much we could do. I was, I was involved with the, not formally, with, with the committee to, to oversee them. I did visit their plant a couple of times. When they had a, a meeting, Janet McCarty was for Selectmen at the time. And I showed up at the plant for the meeting and they refused to let me in. So I told them, that's no problem, which is, tell you, the new haven registered, that you don't want me to come in there. They then opened the door for me. But, you know, they were not cooperative. Upjohn was not cooperative in the old days. How did I live with it? Hopefully the wind wasn't coming out of the south. And, and, and that's what we lived with. There's nothing you could do about it. Where did you live?
Uh, that, the first house was on Hartford Turnpike, past the connector going southbound. So that was a fifteen-seventy-one Hartford Turnpike. So every day I'd be jogging up and down Hartford Turnpike and I had that perfume, that pungent smell, Sherman.
Yeah.
I'll never forget it.
It was, it wasn't very good. As a matter of fact, I think the president of Upjohn lived up on Ridge Road.
He might have, yeah.
And, but the wind didn't blow in his direction. It didn't go from east to west. I'm sorry, yeah, from east to west. Bob, I agree with you. I, I am not a prejudiced person. I have no bones in my body to, against anyone. I, I understand the refugee situation. And to, to put them, to put that cause above the hundreds of causes that we have here that are as important, if not more important, our own people. We, we're not supporting our own veterans. We're not supporting the widows and children of those people that died in Afghanistan and Iraq and Iraq. But, you know, we're jumping on a committee for three-hundred-and-fifty people, but nothing for the hundreds of people that are suffering because of their, their service. And thank you for your service. I served in the Navy for several years. I enjoyed it. I think every, every, everybody of the age of eighteen should go in for two years and learn what it is to be a, you know, to live with other people. All right, now I can get to my other, my real stuff. All right, this is not just my opinion. Several people have mentioned this. And we have several town commissions. And the Board of Selectmen has no, has no limit placed on the time to speak or the ending of the meeting time. The Board of Selectmen has, with the order of Richard Monaco, each speaker has a five-minute limit and there's a time limit to the end of the meeting. Planning and zoning has no limit. Some commissions are face-to-face, some are not. Right now, I understand that the planning and zoning is the only one that's not face-to-face. And that's because a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission isn't comfortable face-to-face. That's why we have alternates. You can't, if you don't, if you can't sit on the commission, then resign. But I think many people would like to come in person because it's very difficult to express yourself on a, on a telephone and not have a, a, a back-and-forth con- uh, condition. So I'd like to find out why the planning and zoning can't be public, face-to-face. You, you have, you have reasons for that, don't you?
Well, I can share with you where we are in the process, Sherman. So because of the, of the volatile nature of one of the recent applications, where hundreds, over a hundred people were, were presenting both sides. You know, there was, there was a lot of people for this project and a lot of people against it. So it was the commission's position that during this pandemic, to have a hundred-plus people in a room may not be the best thing. So they, they had an agreement that once, until that application was totally vetted out and voted on, which it was, that they would do Zoom meetings. Now since then, the commission member that you've mentioned has some serious health issues. That's why he's uncomfortable. Now, you're right about the alternates. There are alternates. So we're working with this commission to get back in face-to-face meetings. That's all I could tell you. And that's something I'm involved with, okay?
Okay. And as far as the, I understand, I know about the state school and all that. I, I didn't have any position on that, but I guess a lot of people did. And they could have had it in the, in the high school if they wanted to really spread people out.
Yep.
Maybe they didn't want that many, you know, they didn't want to have that many opinions. It's time that we resume some sort of normalcy. Most of us have been vaccinated, hopefully, and we wear masks when we're in, in a public place. We can't let this rule the rest of our lives. You may only have a hundred more years left and you don't want to live like this. I have sixty or seventy. I don't want to live like this. But I would like to see everything normal again, just as much as possible.
We agree.
Our children, everyone has suffered. Our children have really suffered. Their education is down the tubes for a year. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, Sherman. Good seeing you tonight. Thanks for coming. You're looking well, Sherman. You look, you look well.
Yeah, like a million dollars.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it, thank you, Sherman, for coming tonight. I think it was pretty encouraging when we had the special town meeting and I'd go back and see what the right date was, September twentieth. We had a very, you know, because of the special nature of the meeting and the, I was very encouraged by the, you know, the great turnout we had for that in the, in the high school out of town.
There were four hundred people there that night.
And that was, you know, it was great to see people come out and, especially something in terms of naming of the concession stand and, you know, that they were so much in favor of and came out specifically for that, you know, to, to throw down the hat and door-sig. But it was just good to have that many people come out. You know, I mean, you know, I, I think, you know, it'd be great if we can finally get back, you know, to, to having some, you know, more, you know, more easily way for people to participate, you know, like you did tonight by coming here in person. So we, thank you.
I try to come to every meeting. I can't always. And it's nice to have a new face, a young face in here.
We thank you for coming tonight too, and you came, been coming to the other ones.
Sherman, you know, it's funny, when you were standing there, I had a flashback. That was almost the exact spot where I first met you, when I started getting involved with the town.
When you ordered our names.
Right.
And you were sitting, we're sitting.
And I came up, we started talking. It was almost in that exact spot. I was thinking about that all those years ago. So, thank you for being here. Any other comments? All right, hearing none? Motion to adjourn.
So moved?
I'll second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
We'll see you at the November meeting, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the town of North Haven.